And then she watches Dr. Phil.
Judge Judy's every time.
Not those all Pacific or not those all over the air?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean lots of some. You know, sales tax. Passing. Staying.
Take it off TV, put it like the back bedroom TV, get rid of the box, put that thing off your seat.
Right, just put off by the new fire truck.
The only way, the only way it really works.
Yeah. Right. Cool.
Let's kind of stay with the long-term vision.
Two are absent. Seven at one.
I was waiting for you.
Are you calling meeting door?
We're, we're, we're talking amongst ourselves. I'd like to call the November fourteenth Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Will you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the commission secretary note the absences of commissioners Schlosser, Williams, and Short? So I guess we have to pass everything unanimously tonight.
Hope so.
You're gonna have to earn it.
You're gonna have to earn it.
I'm ready.
All right, I will accept commission, um, action on last month's meeting minutes.
Any changes? If not, I move to approve.
All right.
Second.
You've heard the motion to approve, um, the last month's meeting minutes as distributed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have approved the minutes. Public comments? If anyone wants to speak on anything other than what's on the agenda, speak now or, or hold your peace. Very good disclosure of ex parte communication. Okay, no old business, well then we'll jump right into new business. Case number one-two dash two-two-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one, the zoning ordinance text amendment. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Joe?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a proposed text amendment, uh, one of two that will be presented to you tonight. This one deals with various sections of the zoning ordinance. And it's basically related to review and approval procedures and processes. Uh, you may recall that, uh, at least one, one occasion in the past, I had, uh, introduced you to the, uh, legislation that was passed last year, uh, called Senate Bill fifteen ninety-eight, also referred to as the regulatory bill of rights. And it, uh, provides, um, and requires municipalities to, uh, follow certain procedures when, uh, uh, working with an applicant for processing a request for an approval or a permit or a license. And so we have been working diligently in evaluating our ordinances and preparing for implementation of this portion of the, of that bill, which is, uh, has a deadline of December thirty-first of this year to go into full effect. In the course of reviewing things, we found that there were some inconsistencies and some need for clarification within the ordinances themselves. And so what you have before you tonight is the, uh, set of changes that are being proposed to the zoning ordinance to address some of those problems. Now, um, I have a PowerPoint presentation that will walk you through each of the changes, if you would like me to do that. Or I can just go through some of the highlights, skim through some of the highlights, presuming that you've had an opportunity to read, uh, some of it, if not at least the summary portions of the, of the packet. Um, so I will defer to your desires as to which way you'd prefer for me to, uh, proceed.
Well, judging by, um, at least one of the looks that I've received based on your asking of the question, I think high level may be better, but I will, um, sort of bow to the will. I mean, I've, I've had a chance to look over it and, you know, certainly my preference is not to, you know, agonize over each and every single one, especially since I think the vast majority are related to, uh, technical and conforming changes, um, which I really wouldn't want to get bogged down to, but.
Give any of you.
Okay. Yeah, that, that I think it's sort of the will of those of us who are here, um, you know, to, to, to really, to go over kind of the, the most substantive changes.
Okay.
Um, you know, that, that really affect policy and.
All right, I'll, I'll keep it at a relatively high level then and, uh, draw your attention to the ones that may be of most interest. Uh, basically, the, uh, the first set of changes in Article one-one, the title and purpose are relatively benign, and so I won't go into detail on those. Likewise, the change in the article on administration, we clarified, um, some terminology in there to recognize the for, uh, reorganization of the department as Development Services Department is a change for community development, uh, which is, was prevalent throughout the ordinance. So we needed to, uh, address that terminology. And then we, uh, introduced the concept too of the administrative process manual, which I'll talk about in a little more detail as we get into the procedures section. Uh, the section on violations and penalties was revised to match up with, uh, current, penalties, uh, section from, from the, uh, from state law and city code. There were no significant changes made to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, section. So, uh, skip over that one as well. Uh, the first major change was the site plan review committee. We've changed the name of it to the Development Review Committee, uh, which is in and of itself is not a, really a major change, although it does recognize the fact that it reviews more than just site plans. It re, it reviews, uh, all development type proposals. And it's made up of, uh, representatives from, uh, the major city departments that are involved with, in, uh, dealing with development type issues. And so, uh, all the rezoning type actions go through it as long, as well as preliminary plats, final plats, and general plan amendments. So we clarified that, the committee, uh, how, how the committee exists and the fact that it is actually advisory to the zoning administrator. That the, the decision-making authority really rests with the zoning administrator after consultation with the, uh, Development Review Committee. And so, uh, that wasn't as clear as it could potentially be in the ordinance. So that was why that change was made. Uh, we took out a couple of flow charts that were in there that, um, were, had limited benefit and probably belonged more in a brochure type of setting. Um, and then on the section, uh, for the Board of Adjustment, we added some language there to provide for, uh, appointments of less than three-year terms, uh, to facilitate staggering of the members' terms. Interestingly enough, the Board of Adjustment was appointed back in like nineteen ninety-four and I think three of the members just, uh, retired from the board and didn't want to serve anymore. Uh, and, and frankly, probably should have been termed out sooner. So this, uh, they have all their terms come, come due at the same time on October thirty-first. So that makes for a lot of turnover, potential turnover in the board if they all got appointed at the same time and then they all turn over. So we're introducing staggering, uh, terms there. Uh, we tried to clarify the language with respect to processing appeals. Uh, the, this process will be supplemented in what's being prepared as the Administrative Process Manual, which will be a separate, uh, process manual that will contain more detail as to what has to be submitted, um, how it gets processed, how it get, goes through administrative review, substantive review, and then finally is, is acted upon. And there is some, uh, idiosyncrasies in the law that indicate that if you do not process it in a timely manner, do not provide a response that's required in a timely manner, that the applicant actually is entitled to a refund of its, of, of their application fees. And that also, uh, provides for, uh, the ability to file suit for damages if they are somehow injured, uh, in some way by the, the delays. So the, uh, the legislation is, is putting some constraints on this at the same time, which, uh, may or may not prove to be a problem. I guess we'll find out as we start to implement this, uh, new system. Uh, in the procedures section, we broke it in two so that we have, on amendments, we have a section on, uh, boundary amendments. And then we also have a section on text amendments, which wasn't specifically called out in the past. And the, uh, major, or the general processes for reviewing those are now, uh, enunciated in the text of the, of the zoning ordinance. We moved the procedure for processing a use permit from the administrative article over to the procedures article where it is better belongs. And, uh, probably the most significant change in that is, uh, in providing an initial approval period of two years instead of one year, within which time it must be established and also providing for a year extension beyond that. Uh, in a slow market, we, we've seen instances where people have not been able to get to where they need to be in establishing a use. And so, uh, that was, uh, if you will, a kind of a laxening of, of, of the regulations which I think will be, uh, favorably, uh, received. The variance section, we added a time limit of one year within which construction of the approved variance must be initiated, uh, with the ability to obtain a one-year extension. Presumably if someone is pursuing a variance, they will, uh, once, if, if it's approved, they will, they should complete it and not just leave it hanging out there. Likewise, in the special uses, uh, section, uh, we, uh, moved it, uh, back up into the procedures section. So the process for processing a special use is listed there instead of in, uh, Article four. Uh, and again, this one, the probably the most significant change is that it provides a time limit of two years, similar to the provision for use permits during which this use must be established, uh, or it could, uh, potentially expire. Uh, moving along to the site plan requirement review process. This is a section that was, uh, revised to make clear again that how the site plan review committee really functions as a development review committee in advising the zoning administrator and as to the, uh, actual person who makes the final decision, uh, based on their, uh, consultation with them. The, um, currently appeals are filed with the city council. The proposed revision provides for appeals to be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the ability in turn to appeal that decision to the city council. Uh, the appeals of the decision of the zoning administrator on site plans and such have been rare. There is the potential for them to, uh, possibly increase with the new legislation in, in place. But we felt that when it came to site plans and design review, that the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission would be better suited to reviewing those than say, uh, a, a technical Board of Adjustment type of, uh, body. And I trust you'll stop me anywhere along the line here if, if something comes to mind that you want further explanation. I feel like I'm just kind of droning out here. Okay.
That's the unintended consequence sometimes of, um, legislative changes.
Uh, in section one-three, a new section one-three-nine, we added a section on public hearings that describe certain notice requirements that exist for, uh, rezoning app, applications and, and, uh, boundary amendments. For example, like when they're in proximity of Luke Air Force Base, there's an obligation to notify Luke Air Force Base in the state law. It just wasn't contained within the zoning ordinance, so we brought that in. Uh, it helps, probably, it probably helps us more to remember those types of things rather than relying on memory that it's in the state statute and you gotta do something different. So, uh, not a, not a substantial change. And then we moved the applications and fees section, um, but I want to point out that there's no changes in fees being proposed, uh, at this time. The fees are established through another process. It's called the cost recovery and user fee process that's authorized by Article twenty of the city code. And the council periodically reviews the fees and adopts them by resolution. So, um, we're not tinkering with that. Moving on to Article one-dash-four, that's the Design Guidelines Manual. And, uh, the, the most significant change in this section is again, uh, switching the appeal process from a Design Guidelines Appeals Board, which frankly had never been established, uh, but switching it and designated the Planning and Zoning Commission as that body. Uh, I'm happy to say that we haven't never had to process an appeal of a design, uh, review. But if there is an up, uh, upsurge in this type of appeal and if it presents a, a burden to the commission, then we can always reconsider, uh, creating a Design Guidelines Appeals Board. So we've reserved, we've deleted this section but reserved it in case we ever want to, uh, put it back. And then really, um, well, no, um, with the exception of the planned area development district, uh, the balance of the changes are, are fairly, uh, housekeeping and just clarifying the requirements that, in the case of a landscaping, that the landscaping plan is required, it has to be reviewed and approved. In the case of a comprehensive sign package, it has to be submitted, reviewed, and approved. And outdoor lighting plan has to be submitted, reviewed, and approved. And those generally are done in connection with a site plan. So that is just clarifying language in the ordinance. The planned area development, uh, procedures has been, uh, section has been rewritten. Uh, and it better distinguishes between a preliminary planned area development district and a final planned area development district. Uh, as it stands right now, we carry both of them as a P, as PAD on our maps when in fact, uh, some are, are, are only there as a preliminary PAD and have, and will have additional action on them, go through a different, additional review. So, um, the revisions in Article, uh, three-dash-five, uh, were intended to, to clarify that process and, uh, included in the zoning ordinance. So that is the high level, uh, quick and dirty. If it would please the commission, I'd stand for any questions that you might have at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I just have.
Commissioner Peters.
Have you been in consultation or has any of the development community, um, had eyes on this yet? And if so, have they had feedback?
Um, Commissioner Peters and, and Chairman Lux, we've, we've published notice of it. We sent it out through our notify me, uh, notification that it was posted on our draft documents. Uh, I don't have any way of knowing if anybody pulled it, pulled them off and I have not had any contact at this point.
And then the second question is more of a high level of a high level. It's basically this, we're just establishing a, uh, a, a review process, an appeals process that wasn't there before or, you know, what, what is the, what, what effect will we actually notice and feel other than, you know, a lot of administrative changes that were dictated by state law?
I, I think as a practical matter, you probably won't notice a lot of change in, in many ca, not in many cases, but in some cases, we're basically conforming the ordinance to current practice that might not have been exactly as the ordinance was laid out. Or we had practice that was, uh, not in the ordinance and so we put it in the ordinance to give it some more force and effect. So from that standpoint, you probably won't see a lot of change. There was an opportunity and upon advice of the city attorney, we did add some additional standards into the ordinance and tried to make them clearer by which we evaluate requ, uh, requests for rezoning and for special uses and use permits. But I think they're all very practical and common sense types of things that, that we would normally look at regardless. So, um, I think in a nutshell, on the zoning ordinance changes, you, you probably won't see a major difference.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Um, I know that this has been a tedious, much like all of our zoning ordinance rewrites, sort of a, you know, tedious. And, and I certainly appreciate, um, you know, the time and effort that's, that's gone into this. I, you know, I like, um, uh, some of the streamlining, especially eliminating the unnecessary board because it never meets or has never met. It's a good thing when we can get rid of things that are unnecessary. Um, so I, I like that sort of a practical effect as well as, um, sort of allowing the, um, a two-year sort of standing versus, um, you know, the, the one year. Um, you know, despite the fact that we're in a slow market, even in a accelerated market, I think that may have, have a good effect, um, on, you know, getting the right kinds of development rather than who can get here first, even if you can have an extended period of time. So, so I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? All right, then I will close the public hearing and wait for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number one-two-two-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-one.
Okay, you've heard the motion from Commissioner Peters and, uh, a second from Commissioner Hamilton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have recommended approval of case one-two-dash-two-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-one. Moving on to case one-two-dash-two-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-two, the subdivision regulations text amendment, and I will open the public hearing. Joe?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, commission members, as I had introduced to you in the last item, this is a, uh, proposed change to Chapter fifteen of the city code, which, uh, contained the subdivision regulations. And once again, um, as we were going through reviewing the ordinances and in preparing for implementation of, uh, our response to Senate Bill fifteen ninety-eight, we found some areas of the subdivision regulations likewise that, uh, needed some revision. Uh, and, and as I did with the zoning ordinance, I'll go through them as briefly as I can at, at a fairly high level. Uh, just on the definitions section, we, we just basically added a lot of, uh, terms to make it more current. And again, once again, recognizing the, uh, organizational change to creating the Development Services Department. So we added several definitions and deleted a couple and revised a couple, uh, just for, mostly for updating clarity purposes. Uh, fif, section fifteen-one-dash-three is a new section regarding conditions of approval. Uh, again, upon the advice of the city attorney's office, they felt that it would, although, uh, there were, were provisions in the subdivision regulations already allowing for the imposition of conditions uh, for protection of public health, safety, welfare, and all that. Uh, they wanted a separate section in there to make sure it was abundantly clear that they could impose condition, that we could impose conditions, uh, that we could put time limits on conditions and then we could enforce, uh, based on failure to comply with those time limits. Likewise, uh, section fifteen-one-dash-four is a new, uh, provision that just simply clearly establishes the fact that if you subdivide land in the city of Goodyear, you're subject to these regulations. It seemed to be implied by the fact that, that the ordinance existed, but the legal department suggested it should be even more clear, least stated. And so that's why that one was added. Uh, the most significant changes, uh, in the preliminary plat, provisions dealing with preliminary plats is that there were two sections before. One was how the preliminary plat was processed and the second one was what information had to be submitted for a preliminary plat. We basically rolled those two together and, uh, effectively deleted section fifteen-two-dash-four regarding what information needs to be submitted. And then that in turn is going to be contained, uh, partially within the Administrative Process Manual and then also within the engineering, uh, design guidelines, engineering design standards and policies manual, which is a document that already exists, has been adopted by the city council and is what is used, uh, for design standards for public improvements and streets and soap water and sewer and all that. Uh, basically in the Administrative Process Manual, what we will set forth is what has to be submitted with the preliminary plat application. And so just to give you a, a flavor of what that means, for an application to be complete, they have to submit a completed application form, which sounds fairly straightforward and innocuous and is. Uh, but you all, they also have to submit, uh, obviously a copy of the preliminary plat drawing and one more sheets that shows what's being proposed on the property. A preliminary drainage report, a preliminary water report, preliminary sewer report, preliminary reclaimed water report, a traffic impact study, uh, preliminary utility plan, and, uh, a couple of other items that if they're located in areas of particular, um, circumstances like hillside or adjacent to a freeway, they may have to provide additional information. And the reason why this is so important now is what is required under the state law is that when someone submits an application, the first thing, the obligation of the municipality is, is to review that application for completeness. So what they want to try to avoid is somebody submits something that's not complete and gets halfway through the process and they go, oh, well, you didn't submit this. And so then the process stops and has to back up and they have to submit something additionally. So what we will be tasked with is when an application comes in, which seems fairly straightforward, is we are going to make sure that everything is provided that is required, that we need to have to properly review it before it's allowed to go forward. Because once it's allowed to go forward, then, uh, basically the city has an op, one opportunity for a substantive review. We need to respond with everything that's deficient and they get an opportunity to resubmit and comply with all the, uh, requests for information or revision. At that point, the city is presented with the, uh, decision to either, in the case of a preliminary plat at the staff level, we don't have approval authority. We have just a recommending, recommending authority. So our options at that point would be to recommend approval, recommend approval with conditions or recommend denial. And actually, there's a fourth option that it, with the consent of the applicant, they can undergo an additional review, provided it can occur within the timeframes that are set forth. And these timeframes are important again because these are, are set to tell the applicant that within a certain period of time, you will get an answer. But it, it also puts a constraint on the city that if there's not enough time left and we have to give an answer, that answer might not be a positive answer. It might be a negative answer. So there's the potential for causing some friction as we go along in this process. But I think we'll all adapt to it and I think the developers will understand, that, that they should make best use of their reviews and, uh, not submit unless it's complete and not submit unless they've been, all the items have been properly addressed. Going forward from there, we, we would basically get the plat to the point where we would be able to advise approval, approval condition or denial to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Then you will have your opportunity to go through the plat and likewise make a recommendation to the city council. And then the city council would make the, uh, final decision. Interestingly enough, the subdivision regulations is currently written and did, indicate that the preliminary plats are to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and then the final plats are approved by the city council. But apparently some time ago, it was the council expressed their desires to see preliminary plats, that they did not want them to stop at the Planning and Zoning Commission. They wanted them to come forward to the council. For whatever reason, I don't know, the code was never changed to match that direction, but that has been the practice that we've been following. These revisions put that into effect and make it the, uh, the requirement to, that the preliminary plat's come through you and they get council review before they're, uh, approved and accepted.
As far as the deletion of fifteen-dash-two-dash-four, so is the, sort of the editor's note going to remain in the, in the ordinance until such time as we need to replace that where you're cross-referencing the, those requirements, you know, in the Administrative Process Manual and the Engineering Design Standards? Or is that, I mean, is that editor's note for us? Or is that going to be for sort of the general, you know, will that appear in the actual ordinance moving forward so that it would, you know, instruct whoever is looking there, oh, it's not here if they don't otherwise know, hopefully they should, but, um, you know, where they need to find those requirements if they have questions?
The, the requirements are actually spelled out in, in the prior section that was kind of combined together. And so the section that's being deleted will, uh, will not have an editor's note. It'll have just basically a reserved provision so, just so we don't have to bother to renumber the other, the other sections.
Okay.
What are the? One of the other changes that we made to the preliminary plat procedures is clarifying that the concurrent processing of the zoning amendments with preliminary plats is allowed and how that would occur. Again, with the time limits that are set forth, now we have to meld the time limits together when we're dealing with different applications. So, we had to build in the provision that the preliminary plat couldn't be acted upon until at least the zoning action was taken by the city council, so we had to clarify that. Secondly, we, we kept the time expiration on preliminary plats at 12 months, but we do allow for multiple 12-month extensions of preliminary plats upon showing that the subdivider is making an effort to move the plat forward and that there's been no significant changes in the engineering standards that should be reconsidered in approval of the preliminary plat. And then lastly, in this section, we provided appropriate references to the city's engineering design standards in the policies manual. Likewise, in the sections on final plat, we did the same thing, combined the two sections, eliminated the section on submission requirements, relying basically on the engineering design standards administrative process manual for that. The major changes in the final plat section deal with a new provision wherein we're, will be requiring final plats that are approved in the future to be recorded within 90 days of the approval of the, by the city council. Otherwise, they would have to either resubmit or get a 90-day extension from the city council. And the reason we're doing this is we've run into some problems over the last few years with approvals being given to final plats and then the final plats never being recorded. And what that's resulted in is we have something on the order of 47 final plats that are out there that have received council approval but have not been recorded. They represent something on the order of 5,600 single-family lots that are just hanging out there in limbo that is not a good way to manage our resources. When the plats have received council approval, they can come, essentially come back at any time and record the plat, and we're committed to provide services in, in the manner that previously agreed upon. And so, it puts us in a bad position in terms of being able to allocate our infrastructure resources, water and sewer capacity in particular, by allowing plats just to linger and not come to completion. So, this is something that the development community may not like, but it's something they see in other communities. The 90 days plus 90 days is similar to what the city of Phoenix uses. Some cities require the plats to be, and the construction plans to be all ready and approved, and, and performance bonds posted before the city council action even. So, I, I've, I've worked in cities where that's been the case, and so each city does it a little bit differently. This would allow them to get a final plat approval from the city council and still perhaps clean up any kind of minor items within that 90-day period. But it does hold their feet to the fire that if they're going to develop, then they need to develop and move forward.
Well, something that allows you to actually plan.
It might help us in, in that respect. The change to 1531 was just a general reference to the engineering design standards. It contained a reference to the MAG standards, which we do abide by, but only when our standards don't cover something. So, that clarifies that and makes it conforming with the engineering design standards. We made a couple of other relatively minor changes to some standards that didn't really conform to practice. I will point out that under the street naming provision, street names, although generally not discussed a whole lot with the commission during plat review, I mean, and that doesn't come up as an item of contentiousness at all, but it does say that street names are reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and then approved by the city council during the plating process. Street name changes, however, are, are, we're revising it to make them go straight to, to the city council rather than to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think as a practical matter, that's how it's been handled in the past, except that it's, that's not the way it read in the subdivision regulations. And then lastly, the schedule of improvement requirements, these provisions deal with how improvements get installed and when they get installed, once a final plat is approved. There's a couple of key points here. One is that if the subdivider is doing a final plat and they intend to phase the construction of the improvements within the final plat, they need to provide us with a phasing plan so that we can make sure that it's, all the improvements that are necessary to serve each phase are in, are in place properly. And then secondly, there was some clarification of the types of assurances that we would accept to guarantee the installation of improvements. And then lastly, is a provision that requires the construction to actually commence within six months from the date of the final plat is recorded, which again is to avoid having plats just sit out there and nothing gets developed. So, I think those are probably the, the most significant changes that are being made at this time, and I'll ask for any questions the commission may have at this point.
Any questions of the, of the commission? I, I am surprised that you haven't heard from the development community on sort of that 90-day recording requirement, but obviously I, I presume that you might be prepared for some opposition at council. Maybe they're just biding their time.
Yeah, Chairman, like, at this point, yeah, I'm not exactly sure. But again, I would point out that this, this is not, we, we are probably atypical in the way we've been doing it compared to other communities. So, I think a lot of the developers are, would be already accustomed to, to do in businesses way. Some, for exa, for example, Sunbelt Holdings with Palm Valley 303 project, mentioned it to them, and they said that, you know, their response was, well, that's the way that Peoria does it when we're developed up there. So, it's, so I don't know, I, it may, it may not be as big a deal as it may first appear.
Yeah, no, from, from my perspective, I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable. And again, you know, you, the cities have budgets to manage and, you know, improvements to plan and, and resources to commit. And, you know, having open-ended things doesn't sound like the best way to, to manage your resources or be able to, you know, take.
And that's exactly our point, is when you have those commitments already made, then the next guy that comes through the door, you may not have a capacity, on paper, you may not have capacity because you've already made these commitments, and it, it's not really fair if you look at it that way.
Right. Any other questions or comments? All right, then I will close the public hearing and wait for commission action.
Mr. Chairman.
I move that we approve case number 12-220-00002.
Heard the motion from Commissioner Miller.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Peters. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you have recommended case number 12-220-00002, the subdivision regulations text amendment. Right, report on general plan committee activities.
Okay, apologize for that short delay. The general plan committee met last night and had a really good meeting with the committee. The focus of last night's meeting was on crafting a vision statement, and the initial work toward that occurred at the visioning workshop that we held on November 3rd, which was, which was a really great event in terms of the presentations that were made. We had an ASU professor that talked about sustainability and what makes a good community, what are the key elements to a, a community. And then we had a economist talk about the economy, not just about the current economy, but also about the economy of the future, which was very, very interesting. And then we had a presenter on arts and culture, lady who used to be the Arts and Cultural Affairs Director in Tempe, and she talked about the importance of art and culture to a community and, and actually what an economic driver it actually can be. And so, after those speakers did their presentations, we offered the participants lunch and then had an opportunity for question and answers to, to occur with the panel. And then we broke out into groups and talked about, you know, what are some of the important things that should be in a vision statement? And then the individual tables came up with their vision statements, presented them, got questions, went back to their tables, worked on them some more, and then represented them. And then we hung them on the wall and then had everybody vote for their preferred vision statement on one wall with one sticker each, and then they each had three stickers that they could use to highlight some of the best ideas that were captured during the discussions on, on a set of sheets that we had on the other wall. And they could put one bu, tag on each one, or they could put all three on one if they thought it was a super fantastic idea. And so, those ideas came forward and potential vision statements came forward to the committee last night, and they worked on it. And this is the draft vision statement that they came up with, is to create a highly desirable place for all to live, work, visit, and play by fostering a sustainable community with diverse destinations connected throughout the city, encouraging growth by offering opportunities for cultural, educational, and economic development while recognizing our assets, history, open spaces, and maximizing partnerships and collaboration. So, that was the result of a, an iterative process that the committee went through last night. Peter Fine here, who's in the audience, is a member of the committee, and after I'm done, maybe we give him opportunity if he'd like to say what his perception was. And Commissioner Hamilton was at, at the meeting as well, and so if, if you would like to offer your ideas, that would be great too. Next month, we intend to host a work session with you regarding the general plan and the visioning statement as well. And so, we wanted to give it to you tonight so that you'd have it to think about by the next meeting. And in the meantime, we're going to review the vision statement with the city council at a work session on December 10th. It'll be further refined at the December general plan committee meeting. And then they'll also start working on creating visions for each of the sub, subdivisions, if you will, for each of the chapters within the general plan. And then it'll be brought back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for more discussion. We do have a series of open house meetings that we plan to hold January 29th, 30th, and 31st. They'll be in three different locations each night, or one, they'll be at a different location each night. One in the northern part of the city, one in the central, and one in Australia. And that'll be an opportunity to talk about the general plan and to get initial reactions from the general public as to the vision statement and what they think about it. So, that is what I have. Oh, I'm not, yeah, I'm not done yet, I'm just done with the presentation part. And so, I was going to just ask if you had any questions, or if Commissioner Hamilton would like to say anything, or Mr. Fine?
I'm just going to add that it was discussed whether or not, or how they felt about having someone from the commission come, and they were very receptive to that idea. They would like to have someone from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Youth Commission both attend their meetings, so.
Okay. I perhaps want to just quibble very slightly, semantical, on the very first word of the draft vision statement, the word create. Does this not assume that we don't already have a highly desirable place to live? Again, just to quibble, maybe provide, might, you know. So, you know, just.
So, you'd like to continue to create?
Maintain.
Or to maintain?
Provide. I just, I don't want to assume that, that, that Goodyear is not a great place to live, which it is, but, you know, certainly more can be done, but I just, I don't want anyone to assume that, that we're a bad, you know, just someplace out in the sticks, you know, that, that's, that's not great, and, you know, while not recognizing the contributions of, you know, of those who have made the city what it is today. That's just, again, a minor quibble.
I, I think it started off with the word foster, and then it changed to create because I think we use foster someplace else. And so, it's, it was certainly an iterative process, but those, those are the kind of comments that we, we want to get, and that, that was a great suggestion.
Well, for wordsmith, then I'd strike highly since it's redundant. Either desirable or it's not.
It's awesome. They're run-on sentences, and that's the teacher in me. I'm looking at like, my God.
Right.
I know.
But, but vision statements are because you're throwing the kitchen sink at it, and it's always yes.
We, we agree, we may have to break down and put a period or two in there.
Whoa.
Yeah.
If you're semi-collin.
To, what, what is the general, how does the general plan committee define sustainable? I mean, talking about sustainable energy financially, you know, birth rates, I mean, what, what?
Well, I don't know that I, I can, I, I don't know that I know exactly what they're thinking. I would suspect it's probably more along the environmental lines of energy conservation and that kind of thing. But I, I don't know, do you have a, a feel for what's?
Energy resource efficiency.
Well, I'm just, you know, the, one of the things that's important to me, and I, I hope that sustainable includes this, is financial sustainability. And I don't want to sacrifice the city's well-being financially for, you know, some, you know, environmental concerns, which are certainly important, but we have to be able to balance the two and, you know, not, not just focus on one, one aspect, but think about it.
But, you know, you know, I agree with that, but that's why a vision statement should be very broad, because then you can delineate those points which are important under, as you, you know, bring it further out. But a vision statement is very broad, not specific at all.
Yeah, I agree.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to formally designate someone to go to the next meeting or accept volunteers?
I, well, at this point, I will certainly accept volunteers.
What's the date of the next meeting? I'll be in the Caribbean, sorry.
Apparently Commissioner Miller will be phoning in from Aruba or some exotic destination to chime in, no.
From a desirable community.
Yes.
A highly desirable.
Mr. Chairman, it's still unclear to me what the liaison's purpose, other than reporting back to this body, would be. I don't know if we ever came to a resolution on that last month on what the role would be, because I, I thought it was still kind of an ad hoc, show up, encourage people to show up.
I, I think, you know, at least for me, and, and as I recall the discussion from, from last month, is that I think the purpose for us designating someone would be if we didn't otherwise know someone would be attending.
Right.
And there was a, a item of particular interest or significance that would lead to, you know, come before us in some capacity in the future. And I, and so, I anticipate that Commissioner Hamilton will, will continue attending as.
As many as I can.
As many as.
Well, I, I guess I can direct my question to. Well, I, I guess I can direct my question to, uh, Mr. Chairman, to Ms. Hamilton, is, is this kind of what you envisioned, is, or did they ask you to kind of participate and weigh in on behalf of the, on behalf of the commission at the meeting, or were you kind of there as a member of the audience and, and then come back and report to us on what's going on?
Well, I did, um, offer an opportunity to participate, but, um, I thought it was a little early in the process for, uh, a member of the commission to be inserting ideas, so I chose to remain, uh, as part of the audience last night. I'm waiting till it gets a little more substantive before I think we might get more actively involved. This was a painful process for them, I think, I mean, appeared to me, that it, I mean, what they started with and what they came up with, it was difficult for them.
Vision statements are tough.
Yeah, and I think they are still working on this. I don't think this will end up being the final statement by any means, so.
I, I guess that leads to my next question, Mr. Chairman, is I, I just, I don't know if I'd feel comfortable, you know, in six months or whenever things do get meaty, representing the, the views of the council or the, the, the commission without, you know, the, the commission taking a vote on something, you know, because I may have a different perspective than, than you may have on, you know, whatever.
Well, um, you know, then, then I guess what I would suggest, at least at this point, is, um, is, uh, well, I don't want to assume, but I will presume the, that Commissioner Hamilton will be there at the next meeting, um, but perhaps if they're, um, uh, in taking Commissioner Peters' point about something of significance that may require, I don't want to say a vote, but sort of a general consensus of the council, if there's something that we really need to weigh in on based on the issues, um, you know, that are going to be presented or, or discussed during the meeting, then maybe that can be on, on our agenda, um, so that we can sort of discuss those, and, and if we have a specific point we want to make, um, you know, to insert in the discussion, we can take that, that action up, and, and then who, whomever, um, is chosen, um, or, you know, frankly, who, who goes to, uh, the commission meetings can then, you know, present that from, you know, as a, a, a counter, a commission recommendation, at least from us. Um, but otherwise, I think it, I think your point is a good one, or your position is a good one, is just, you know, kind of stay on the periphery at this point, because it's, it's early. Um, and, and, and they should, they should kind of feel their way and, and get into a, a place where they're, now they're talking about things where interaction with us is going to be inevitable versus just an overall, um, um, you know, sort of high-level 30,000-foot where they, where they are right now. Maybe we need to descend a little bit.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think this was ever, um, meant to be suggested to be, um, controversial or adversarial or anything. Uh, I, I, you know, we brought it up just thinking that it would be beneficial to have that resource there and available, uh, but I think your point's well-taken, that whoever that resource is has to be cognizant of the fact that if they don't know or have a feeling of what the general consensus of the commission is, then they may, may want to reserve, uh, making comment, but if they know it, then I think it's beneficial to the general plan committee to maybe have the information coming directly from a commission member, so, um, I, I, I think we can work out a procedure that will work like you described if we've, if we find that there's something very contentious and, and controversial, but, uh, in the meantime, I think it's really meant to be a cooperative.
Yeah, absolutely, informational.
Congenial kind of relationship.
They're still on the vision.
Chairman, I, I, I agree.
Okay.
Beneficial and.
It'll be a long ways. If they're still working on the vision statement, it'll be a while.
And I have confidence in staff that they'll, and the facilitator, be able to, you know, kick it forward once it gets bogged down. That's sort of the, the idea, so.
I think it was interesting that they were, they welcomed the idea that a commission member, if they're present at the meeting, would be welcome to join in the discussion and not just sit in the audience and wait for your three minutes at the beginning or end of the meeting, or whatever it was, so.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chairman, are, are these meetings well-attended?
By the members?
No, by the, by the audience.
By the public?
Yeah.
Um, there was probably a handful, uh, half a dozen interested parties.
Mr. Chairman, do they usually speak, or are they more observers?
There were two that, uh, took the opportunity to speak to the committee. Um, one was Joe Husband from the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, who really wanted to talk about the transportation, uh, plan, master plan, which was slated to be discussed on the agenda, but because the contract negotiations with the consulting firm hadn't been completed yet, it was deferred. And then the other one was a, a new resident to Goodyear who, uh, had been a transit manager, um, elsewhere, and just offering his expertise and advice and willingness to help, um, so, which was, uh, nice.
Yeah, I think usually what you find in these is that, um, you know, you get those who are interested, you know, you have, uh, some representative development community who, who aren't on the, on the commission to, you know, they like their points across, and then, once we talk about roads, those people who are getting the freeways in their backyard, they come out in full force. So, um, that's kind of how it usually, or at least it worked the last time, so. Um, well, I think then at this point, um, I think we'll sort of, I don't, I don't think that we necessarily need to designate anyone at this point, um, still leave it, uh, as an option for any of us to attend and, and participate if we want to. Um, you know, if the next meeting you feel like, you know, you would like to participate and, and join the, the table and the discussion, feel free, um, if not, that's also a sign too, if the discussion may dictate, you know, ultimately what, what those decisions are, so, um, unless anyone else objects to that, um, I think that's.
That's all I.
I think that's what we'll, that's what we'll do.
Mr. Chairman, I have another quick question, um, who, who's the chair of the general planning committee?
Chuck Watson. Watson, thank you.
What's his background?
I, I don't know what his background is professionally, um, he lives in the northern subdivision, which is, um, off of Van Buren, uh, in Central, and he's been a, uh, kind of a neighborhood leader, uh, in that area. He's helped with graffiti busting and, uh, even though they don't have a formal homeowners' association, it, like, um, some, a lot of the other subdivisions, they, they have kind of a, an alliance that they've created that helps represent the neighborhood even though they don't have a formal homeowners' association, so, uh, he, he seems a really, really nice guy and, uh, level-headed and is, is doing a good job of running the meetings so far, so.
That's good, I just, I didn't, I didn't know his name, so I was curious who he was. Thank you.
Staff communications?
Uh, one item I had is, you may have noticed, there was a flyer in your agenda packets regarding a boards and commissions training that's coming up on December 7th, I think. Um, and, uh, if any, any one of you was interested in attending, we would like to extend an offer to pay for the, uh, registration fee, so, if you could, uh, let Bobby know, and then we can register. I think we've got, uh, well, close to the end of the month, maybe next week to, to, to register, so if you're interested in attending, just let us know.
Thank you. If there's no other business before the commission, we are adjourned.